The meeting of Shreveport City Council is not being called a quarter. Uh, is this even long?
Yes, it's on, okay.
I would ask if, okay, we're having an invocation. I would ask Reverend Holden if you would like to get up and do the invocation and Councilman Bradford will lead us in the pledge, I believe.
Eternous Spirit, thou who rules and superrules the universe, we ask that if thou would come now, for you said without me you can do nothing, I ask you come and oversee the meeting that's going on today, bless every person that's going to speak, keep your loving arms around him, bless this man, the special man, and all of the councilors. We ask all this in your name, Jesus, amen.
Amen. Let's place the flag. Obligatory.
Obligatory. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Clerk, will you call it, please?
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilwoman Flurry.
Present.
Councilman Featherson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Flurry.
Here.
Councilman Green.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 24th and May 28th?
Second.
Alright, it's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Bradford. Please vote. Motion carries, seven. Does any council member have any awards?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Or distinguished guests at this time?
I do.
Councilman Green?
Yes, Ms. Tabitha Taylor, would you come up and, uh, she's gonna give us an update on some very important information.
Mayor, staff, Tabitha Taylor, 5714 Woodridge Drive. When I was here two weeks ago, we talked about the unified database and I'm happy to tell you that our mayor, we're going to meet July 18th. So Councilman Butcher, I'm gonna need you, Councilman Green, I'm gonna need you, Councilman Flurry, I'm gonna need you, I'm gonna need every last one of you all to attend the meeting at 10:00 a.m. where we're going to discuss the unified database for mental health and for those with disabilities. We talked about this in 2006, 2008, 2010, 2016, but I think at this particular point in time that we are now ready for the implementation process. I did speak to Captain Cordell Williams with Louisiana State Police and he has expressed his interest in being there as well. I will follow up with Captain Gibbs with the Sheriff's Department. I have also spoken with Flurry, and Commissioner Lewis Johnson, who has also offered his support in this. So I think that if we go ahead and initiate this process then we could be on the forefront of changing the way first responders respond to those with disabilities and with mental health issues. I'm done.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other council members at this time? None. Mayor Perkins, do you have any communications at this time?
I do, Mr. Chairman. At this time, can I have Zach Salter and Eric Hatfield come to the podium? So Zach, we got a, we got a real community hero here. Zach Salter is a young man who helped us out and found the, uh, the pipe burst yesterday.
Wow.
Um... So Zach, thank you for your efforts in pointing us in the right direction to resolve a sewer problem over the weekend. At this time, I'd like to thank you and Constable Eric Hatfield as well for your assistance in being the liaison between the city and Zach as well in allowing us to get these repairs solved as quickly as possible. There was a sewage leak into freshwater and it would've gone out for, you know, god knows how long had it not been for, for your efforts. So we greatly appreciate it with that. And I want to open up the floor to you if you want to make any comments. Zach says he doesn't have anything, but I want to share a quick story that Zach shared with me. So Zach, uh, he was just out fishing and found this, this problem for us, but now since he was on the front page of the paper today, he's being recognized by the mayor right now, he asked his aunt if he could come over to her house to swim and she says her swimming pool, her swimming pool does not have enough room for him and all the paparazzi around him. So we got, we got a real superstar, so thanks again, Zach.
So I would mention one thing, that I know that the, uh, the city and the water department gets a lot, gets a bad rap a lot of the time for different things and so when they do do great things, sometimes those things go unnoticed. So I do want to recognize the fact that I made, when, as soon as I made contact with STD dispatch and asked for an emergency number for sewer department, within less than an hour, someone from the, from the water and sewer department contacted me, they met me out there and then within a couple hours, I mean, it was, they had troops on the ground, they had all, this is on a Saturday, so the water and sewer department, these guys stayed out there, at least four or five of the same guys stayed out there all weekend long, didn't go home, I never saw them leave to go get lunch or anything, they stayed out there diligently to work and resolve this. They took it so seriously. The mayor's office reached out to me over the weekend, they reached out to us, you know, just yesterday, today, and just everyone, it's really, it's been a joint effort with the city of Shreveport, with the mayor's office and water and sewer, the deputy director, everyone involved and it wasn't just the people that are, that were, you know, performing the labor work, it was the people in the administration that were actually out there taking time away from their families on a Saturday and Sunday to do this. And so Mayor Perkins, thank you so much for your input in this, for Mr. Riggs and all the other guys that you had out there and it's good to see the city of Shreveport working in unison to get something like this taken care of. Even though it wasn't some great deal, you still took it seriously and you treated it as if it was a, uh, a, a big deal. And so on behalf of just myself and, and, you know, the other people that we worked with and that we've talked to, we appreciate the way you handled it.
Awesome, thank you. Council members, you got any comments you want to make?
Uh, Councilman Green and then Councilman Butcher.
Yes, sir. Uh, Zach, man, I heard about it on TV and I was just really, just overwhelmed. You did a great job and, uh, I didn't know you were coming today, but tomorrow I'll get it to the council's office. I would like to get you a gift card to my favorite place that I eat at, Newt's and I'll have it up here for you. But man, I just really was impressed and I also asked the chairman if, after the comments, if you could come up here and we're gonna take a picture with you. I just think, man, you're a great hero. I hear about heroes out of town, but you're my hero for life.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Butcher?
Zach, thanks. I really appreciate you bringing that to us and letting us know. For those of you that don't know, it's in a pretty isolated area and it could've gone on for quite some time, so I appreciate you finding that and reporting it. And Constable Hatfield, thank you for getting on top of it. I, I also would be remiss if I didn't speak to Ms. Featherson and her group. I spoke yesterday about it, but, um, I didn't know anything about it until about 10 o'clock in the morning and I saw Eric's Facebook post and somebody from the 12 Oaks Homeowners Association tagged me in it and I immediately emailed Ms. Featherson and within an hour, the mayor's office had responded, Ms. Featherson had responded and, uh, the emails went on all weekend with updates. So sometimes we get upset with the water and sewer department and other city departments, but, uh, this was handled very well and, uh, it wouldn't have started if it wasn't for Zach, so, uh, I appreciate it and thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Come around.
Uh, alright.
It's coming all around. No, come.
And I also got one other prize for Zach. I'm gonna give Zach a, uh, a mayor's pin as well so he can represent the city of Shreveport this summer while he's beating off all the paparazzi.
Zach, thank you, buddy.
Additionally, we're excited to have the opportunity this month to welcome Carla Cook. She's Sam Cook's youngest daughter to our city and offer an apology to her and her family for the unfair treatment of Sam Cook received here more than five decades ago that will take place at the Let the Good Times Roll Festival on June 22nd, 2019 at Festival Plaza. Next, since we last met, Chairman Bowman, Councilman Green, we, y'all both join me at the meeting with a coalition of citizens to discuss the potential of a citizens advisory committee or a citizens review board for public safety. That meeting was very, very productive. We thank you for coming out and speaking to us about your concerns. They provided a list of recommendations to my staff and we've since responded to that list as well. So we emailed copies and we, uh, did physical mail as well, so looking forward to having follow-on meetings with you all and working with you in the future. Lastly, well, last two notes, I want to thank everyone who stopped by my table this weekend at the Southern's Gentleman Cook-Off Classic. I think I was the unofficial champion, no bias at all. No, the food was great. Next year I gotta get Councilman Bradford and Councilman Flurry to, uh, do some cooking because I think they ate enough of my sausage out there. And I also want to mention that the farmer's market is now open on downtown Shreveport. If you want fresh produce, fresh food, stop by and, uh, you know, help out our, our local farmers that are having all that good stuff down there. And lastly, I want to recognize the city's Leadership Academy, employees throughout city departments. Are you here in the audience? Can you all stand up?
Yep.
Let's give them a, a round of applause. These are city employees that have gone above and beyond to attend the city's Leadership Academy, learn further leadership skills with the potential to going up higher in city management. So these are city employees that go like above and beyond and not just for their personal accomplishments, but also for the city of Shreveport. So I just want to personally thank you all for having that drive and determination to make yourselves better so that we can be better as a city, so thank you.
Councilman Green?
Yes. For sure, I didn't know, but there's a lady that just stood up that was in my vacation Bible school class last week at Union Mission, I believe. Would you just stand up? Was I a good, was I a good teacher? That's how you made it through this?
I enjoyed serving, I'm enjoying, I felt like family there, I really did. It was great.
Wow, thank you. Good to see you. What happened?
Mr. Chairman, that's, uh, that's all I have for comments.
Okay, Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, we would be, be remiss if I didn't acknowledge distinguished commissioner from District 12, Mr. Lewis Johnson is in the audience. Good to see you, my friend. As well as another friend, the owner-operator of Real Barbecue, Mr. Harvey Clay is here as well. Good to see you, sir.
Alright, um, while we're still doing that, I just wanted to say that, uh, we have Sammy Mears who's here, I would say probably honorary, uh, member of the council. Sammy's here almost every meeting, I don't think he's maybe missed two since I've been here. And, um, Sammy, when we had a small disruption a few weeks ago, Sammy was standing down front, was sitting out front and I think it disturbed him a little and I just wanted to offer, uh, an apology from the council to you for having to be that close to and witness something like that. I just wanted to apologize to you for that, okay? On behalf of the council. Okay? Alright. Property standards? Any member have any questions or concerns related to the property standards? Uh, I want to set a meeting to meet for property standards meeting if, if it's good, this week or next week, I don't know. Probably set that up sometime this evening. I should've did it last week and I didn't, so I'll let you know soon.
Okay.
Okay? We got a revenue report from Ms. Jones, Ms. Creo sent her, well, we talked about that yesterday.
There's, there's been no changes.
Okay. Alright. And Mr. Thompson, is there any legislate, well, is legislation to be added today?
Uh, we have one item, it's an ordinance to amend and reenact Section 50-167 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Shreveport and otherwise provide with respect there too.
Is there one, anyone want to speak for or against adding this to the agenda? Anyone want to speak for or against adding to the agenda?
I'm not sure you understand what's actually happening.
We have? I'm sorry?
I don't think people understand what's happening. We don't.
We asked about, uh, adding a piece of legislation to the agenda.
What is the legislation?
To add, Mr. Thompson, if you want to explain, please?
Yes, it would be an amendment to the sagging pants ordinance.
Okay. And we have the following request to...
This is specifically, we're speaking to add this amendment.
To add it to the, wait.
Yeah, to add this new amendment to the agenda.
Okay, I think we're all confused. What is the new amendment then?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Uh, the, there's a sagging pants ordinance that's on the agenda. It would do away with the ordinance that we now have. Assuming that that one does not pass, that that revocation does not pass, this one would be one to amend it and it would amend it by taking away the fine and the only penalty would be community service. Uh, and it would also prevent the police from making an arrest. They could give a warrant to appear in court, but you could not actually arrest the person. So this is, uh, well, it's not now.
James Carstensen, 913 Prospect Street. With all due respect, Jerry, I think that's preposterous. I think the whole country's watching right now and I think we need to get that thing repealed right now. You know, we all love your mother. It's, uh, and we appreciate it, but loyalty's going a little too far there. Let's get this thing done. Guys, don't add this to the agenda, let's pass the thing. You've already got five or six votes, just get it done and move on. You got a ton of people here ready to speak. Thank you.
Alright. Please. And for the record, this has nothing, this is not to do with my mother, this is something, I've spoken to several people myself outside who, uh, the district I represent and not, and other districts also, there's a part of the community who does not want this repeal. It's not Jerry Bowman's deal, this is something that other people have called me and I think other council members have gotten, uh, the same, not just me, uh, who does not want to repeal this. So that's where that comes from.
My name is Ernest Small. I live at 3123 S. Physician Avenue. Sagging started along with rap music and I'll rap a sag on television every day and that's what they do. And, uh, the reason that the people are sagging because they see it all the time, that rap music ain't going nowhere, sagging ain't going nowhere. That's a waste of agenda, waste of time and ain't even nothing to worry about. If, if this is high soil in my neighborhood, I just won't look at it. I'm not gonna burn a house down because I don't like the way it look. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too, now.
Lee Harville with Caddo Parish Public Defender's Office, 400 Travis Streets, Suite 20. The problem that I have with the amendment is that it would do nothing to make the con, the law any more or less constitutional, any more or less vague. One of the main problems is this, it would still give the opportunity to approach, which I think has been disproportionately shown to attract or be, go toward young black men. And I think it was 100% of the arrests in juvenile court were black and 98% of the adult court arrests were black. While you are, I think, trying to do something good and, and working out the middle ground, the problem with the original ordinance and the problem with this, if you ticket someone, which is all you could do in the original ordinance, you need their name and their address. If someone doesn't have an identification on them, if they give the wrong information for an arrest or an approach that was unconstitutional, you have the same issue. You've let it grow from a sagging pants violation to now resisting arrest violation. You've solved nothing. It's wonderful because it takes away the economic disparity which you have of finding people, but it doesn't address the underlying issues which have been pointed out by the ACLU and in court. So again, it's a nice effort and I appreciate that, but you're not going to solve the underlying problem. In fact, you'll give it more legs. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Mr. Thompson a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, does the motion to add legislation to the agenda require unanimous vote?
Yes, that's correct.
It requires a unanimous vote and the votes more, more than likely are not there to do it, but I think that, uh, to give due diligence to all of the community and people who have been asking about it on both sides, people who want it to be repealed and those who do not, I think that we have to give a fair shot at that and all we got to do is vote and you all say that you don't want to do it and we move on from that. It's, it's, it's simple, it's really simple.
And I, I will say, Mr. Chairman, that I certainly understand and respect that there are a variety of opinions concerning this legislation, like you have received communications for and against the sagging pants repeal.
That's true.
And, uh, certainly there's no reason to fault the chairman for proposing this legislation. It's not going to be added to the, the agenda today because there are multiple votes against that, so that's not going to happen if you're standing up to speak against adding to the agenda.
Still deserve to have your voice.
You still have, you still can speak, but it's, I'm just saying this, nine times out of nine, it's probably not going to happen, but I had to do that. Uh, I'm sorry?
Yes, some of them are holding up. I passed the pick and rest Baptist Church and now there's been so much going on about sagging bridges. Let me say something, you know, I'm gonna give you a word. In the book of First Corinthians, 13 chapter, 11 verse, Paul says, "When I was a child, I spake as a child." He said, "I understood as a child." And I thought as a child, but when I became a man, I put away childish things. I came to Louisiana in 46, left home with a loving mother. When I would, my pants were de down, I don't know whether they had them, I'm pretty sure she taught me how to lift them up, okay? My thing is this, I don't think the law need, probably need remending, but somebody need to tell you when your pants are down, look, pick them up. Because when I was a child, I acted as a child, that's a childish thing for a grown man to walk around and with his pants down, you know, and that doesn't have anything about your ethnicity whatsoever, it's just wrong. It's not decent to do that and that's my take on it. I don't think you need to mend it, I don't think nobody get arrested, somebody just needs to sit there and pick your pants up.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Real quick. Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I am glad that, that you proposed this. I think that we have, we have gotten several, several calls. I, I'm with you, I don't believe that there's a chance of this being added to the agenda, but that's what we are elected to do up here, is to hear everybody's voices, not just the voices that agree with us. So I, I'm, you know, the chairman talked to me about it last week in another meeting and I told him, I said, "Well, I would not be opposed to, to at least opening the dialogue up," but I do not 100% for the record, agree with someone who has sagging pants being arrested and being fined $100, not being able to pay that $100, then being put into jail because they can't pay the $100 and then getting put into the system. So we are, we are, but I'm also not the morality police.
Exactly.
And just because mom, the way I was raised or the way all of us sitting up here were raised is different, I'm not in the business of judging the way you wear your clothes because tomorrow you may say, "Gracie, you can't wear a blue shirt."
Exactly.
So, uh, but I do applaud the chairman for doing this and I, I will be voting to add it to the agenda. However, uh, if it fails, I will be voting to repeal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Quigley?
Um, here's the confusion about governmental policy. Most people, whether they're voters or not, have no clue as to how this whole process works. So what they're trying to do, voters are trying to now get law enforcement to do what parents and the community is supposed to do. And that's where you create other issues, unintended outcomes, that now come up. And now what happens if somebody gets killed or, or beat up? Now you want to say, "Well, that wasn't our intent." That's why the law has to be completely eliminated. As I said before, the person who legislated this, Calvin Lester, at the time had thousands of dollars in fines against him, yet the police never came at him and he never sagged. Cedric Glover, who advocated for this, never sagged and his administration stole millions of dollars from this city. Keith Hightower never sagged and his administration stole hundreds of millions of dollars from this city. So if I had to analyze an ordinance, it would definitely be against people who steal money from the city versus somebody who wears their pants off their butts. I'm against sagging, just like I'm against wearing pajamas to Walmart, but I cannot legislate morality, period. I cannot arrest people for having a different moral compass than I do. And this is what we need to get people to understand when you're talking to them in the community. You are not the morality police. That's their parents, that's their pastors, and that's their community responsibility.
I agree. Um, Mr. Thompson, can we, can we move to go ahead and vote on this or we have to finish this comment?
You have to listen to, uh, anybody who wants to speak.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chairman, order.
My name's Byron Walcott, I live on 4214 Caldwell Drive.
Now, I'm not cutting you off, let me say this, this is just to add this piece, the amendment, to the agenda.
I understand.
And we were just going to vote up here to say, "Yea, go add it," and nay, we're not going to add it. So you still have your time to speak at that particular time, so this is just to speaking against adding this to the agenda, that's all there is. I want to make sure.
For sure, that's what we're going to speak about.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Bowman, I think it's very disrespectful that you would even attempt to add this to the agenda. We have been here for three months talking about this. Anthony Childs lost his life over this and for you to come up here and say, "Hey, we're gonna add this to agenda to maybe keep this law and amend it and change it," it's no different. After Reconstruction, blacks weren't allowed to vote, blacks weren't allowed to do a lot of things after Reconstruction. Women weren't allowed to vote. And are you gonna add a, would you, would, would that be cool to just add amendment and say, "Hey, if, if it doesn't pass, uh, maybe the women won't vote, they'll, we'll do something else?" That's not cool. You, it needs to be totally taken off, totally moved, and we need to vote on that. It shouldn't even be a, an added agenda item. That doesn't make any sense. This is a travesty and for you to say, you know, put this up here for us to vote on and add this to that, that, that's no good for any of us. If you want, if the, if the people in your neigh, I'm in your district, I got two pieces of property in your district.
Right.
And if they wanted to say something about it, they need to get up here, let their faces be known that they support that. You can see my face right here. I don't support it, I don't find it admirable that it's added on here, I don't find it admirable that you would vote to add it on here, I don't find any of that admirable. And it needs to be off of there and we need to move on forward and not bring that up again. If they want to say something about it, they can get up here and stand up and let all, everybody see their face for supporting that. Not call you on, call you on your phone, send you an email in private. It can be done in public, just like everyone else.
Agreed.
My name's Freddie Asholi, I live as a homeless man. Two weeks ago, I was sleeping outside of Rhino Coffee Shop on Line Avenue when a police officer approached me, lights blazing. And I said to myself, this is gonna go...
I'm sorry, is this, is this too?
Absolutely. You're gonna let me finish. I'm gonna say what I need to say.
No, is this about sagging?
Yes, it's absolutely about sagging pants. I'm going to continue despite what you have to say. So I knew that the conversation was gonna go one of two ways. Uh, one, he was going to treat me with respect, which I would then respond and turn to, or he was going to treat me with disdain. And as I've said before, I am accosted weekly by either the Shreveport Police Department or the sheriff's office and of course, he treated me with disdain. Instead of approaching me like a human being and asking me what my issue was that would lead me to sleeping in a parking lot or asking me if I was hungry or if I needed anything, he proceeded... he proceeded to say, "Give me your driver's license, show me your proof of registration." The problem with our police departments is that they display an overall lack of humanity towards African-American men in this community. They treat us like animals and dogs, with acrimony and bitterness. Anthony Childs was murdered by the Shreveport Police Department because he has saggy pants. I was arrested yesterday and spent the day in jail for exercising my First Amendment right to protest. The problem with this city, and the problem with the police departments of this city is a lack of prioritization, right? They're concerned with saggy pants and where I place my feet instead of the fact that men and women are dying damn near daily, right? And I have said this before, many of you on the council like to use the excuse that you have no authority or autonomy. The fact of the matter is, you have tremendous amounts of influence, and you have the ability to pick up a phone and make a phone call and apply pressure. And this is the pressure that I'm going to apply until the day that I die. A man is dead for having saggy pants, you need to do something about it.
Lester Smith, I really, I like the amendment part of it, that's what I meant, Ms. Fuller, when I said an alternative, the amendment was, you know, something other than just repealing it. But as we look around and the census is, people don't want it. But what I want to do, and I want everybody, I'm wishing and praying that everybody will follow suit, we should come down here to discuss whatever we got on our mind with this body, because you're an elected official, and we got the right to come to you. But we have got to stop being hostile toward one another, because we're not enemies. We seeking a common truth, some common ground, that we feel that you people up there can help us resolve in our communities and issues that are happening with us where black men are concerned. Yes, a black man did lose his life because of sagging pants, and nothing we do here is going to bring that back, bring him back. But what we should look for is alternatives so that another family don't have to go through what this family is going through because of overzealous policing or whatever the case. Because, see, we can talk about the police all we want, we need law enforcement. And we got, we got, we have got to stop talking about law enforcement like we don't need them. We need police. So we're going to have to find some common ground between the citizenry and the police department. And we're going to have to find some common ground between you guys up here. Because we can bicker and fight all we want to come down here, and we will get nothing done. We come back next week with the same issues. So I am kind of leaning toward the amendment, but just let's do away with it, and that way, we will have accomplished the mission that was set forth last week, was to repeal it, and let's just move on.
Michael Williams, twenty-one oh one Carver Place, great city of Shreveport, Louisiana. Mr. Chairman, Mayor, I rise to the podium to say that we have to rebuild the moral conscience in America. I know we can't do everything by force, sometime we have to do things by choice. Unfortunate, even when I was a commissioner and sponsored the sagging ordinance in the parish, the intent was not to walk up to young black men and profile them just to give them a ticket and go to jail. My only motivation was we try to store the moral value in this country, because it's hanging on by a thread right now. You look in America, we don't just get shot, police attacking them, but black folk kill each other every day. We point the finger at white folks and other folk, but we kill each other, disrespect each other, we hate on each other, but we quick to point the finger at white folks and other folks. First, we got to clean up the mess in our own community. Those are not white people shooting and raping our children, those are not white people stealing mama, big mama purse and robbing and breaking in the house, those are people that look like me and you. Just because somebody look like you don't mean they for you. So I support the ordinance because I'm just trying to hold on to something that God say passed down the laws and the values to the next generation. And some kind of way, we done got on track, two or three years. Pastor Green was working when he was coming, and we had morals and values and etiquette. Thank you, yes ma'am, thank you, sir. We pulled our pants up. Ain't nothing good about sagging. Very toxic. Not only do police didn't get vetted, when the ordinance was introduced, it was not vetted, it was not educated, it was not a campaign to educate the police and the public about sagging. But unfortunately, sometime, somebody have to lose their life in order for us to come together and do things. We should be crime prevention, not crime intervention. I just pray that, it's on your conscience, leaders, when you vote about sagging, so you saying a lady can wear her Victoria's Secret going public, and then next they gonna act it. Then what you gonna say? So you have a moral conscience, you have a responsibility to think about big mama too, and Papa and them people, that don't know sagging. Young people don't know sagging. There are people in prison that talk about sagging. So, you know, you, the ball is in your court, and this defining over in history, you have a choice to amend what councilmen came up with. I think it's a great deal, we can power it, try if it don't work, then come back here and vote it down. But at least give it a chance. You know, don't care the lesson, the lesson, just give it a chance, and then vote it down.
I'm going to have to ask for any outbursts, it comes through the channels of what we're trying to record, so please try to keep your, you know, responses to yourself or put out in the request to speak form. Step back just a little bit. Okay, there you go.
Okay, Rudolph Glass. Like I said last meeting, it is not up to the police. We all see sagging every day, so we have to do something. I did security at the schools. I was looked at, I was looked down on because I tried to get the kids to follow the rules. There's sagging in the schools, there's sagging in the workplace, there's sagging everywhere. So when would a policeman have time to police if he stopping people for sagging? When Anthony Childs was killed, how many people did he pass that were sagging before he stopped him? So-
Can y'all talk to Mr. Asholai? I'm sorry, please, you cannot come out with the outbursts. That's all I'm asking.
You outburst all the time, I'm not trying to-
I know, but this time, please don't. The next outburst from Mr. Asholai, I'd like to have him removed. I'm sorry, I hate to be, I hate to do that. I hate to do that. It's messing up the transmission. We know how you feel, Mr. Asholai, I understand.
And just, just this amendment doesn't make any sense, because the main thing is, a policeman can stop somebody and say they were sagging just to harass them. That is the main issue, the harassment. You know, I see guys sagging, some of them I know, some of them I don't know, but it'll give an officer a reason, a legal reason to harass. We have too many more problems to bring this in also. So, I mean, it doesn't make any sense. So me, myself, talk to the guys, you talk to the guys, everybody talk to the guys, maybe something can happen. It's almost like a parent called the police on their own child. Makes no sense. So, I mean, this is a waste of time, a waste of time. And like the other guy said, the people that want it, why aren't they here to speak and say, well, they can be seen? Yeah, cowards. So just forget it.
I'm Anthony's child's sister. I want you to take a minute and just step into our shoes as a family. We, when we receive the news that he was murdered, and to find out that it was about, he was harassed about his clothes, I don't think y'all getting, really getting this, that he was targeted by, about his clothes. He hadn't committed a crime, there was no proper cause or anything he had done to anybody, it was his clothes that I had to bury my brother. And if you want to say, and you step behind these, this polity, this whatever, and, and keep putting it off and put it out, but it was his clothes. And if you don't do something about it, it's going to happen again and again. And you can say, "Well, it's just me in this place today," but it could be anyone of y'all, y'all brothers, your cousins, your nephew, it could be any of y'all. So don't take this lightly, because a man did lose his life, I lost my brother. He lost, my nieces and nephew lost their father because of his pants. His pants were sagging. This officer traced him down through a field because his pants was at a certain length. So I want you to take a minute and just think about that. If it was your son, your grandson, your dad, your brother, would you want to receive the news from that? Not that he had robbed the store, not that he had went in and killed somebody, but it was his pants. I don't think, nobody is really getting this, it's like, it's a lot of paperwork, a lot of technicalities, but if somebody was murdered and he was harassed over his pants, being too low, where, where in America? And we can get harassed over how we wear our pants? Are y'all serious that we put it in the, in the hands of the legal system of a police officer? That is not right. I don't care which way you guys look at it, it is not right, not here, there, or tomorrow. So if you keep putting it out, I'm gonna come every time it's on the agenda, whatever you do, I'm gonna be here and fight for him, because it's not right. And I don't understand how you can sleep at night and think it's right. It's time to do something about this stuff and stop standing behind these positions and work on these stuff, get this stuff done. It don't make sense. Enough is enough.
Mr. Chair. Ma'am, I just like say, I get it. As I've said, and I said to Talitha Taylor today, and I also said to Ms. O'Brock, that I was a part of, back in the day when we put this together, but when Councilwoman Fuller called me about it, I felt what you just said, because I was a part of some legislation that what meant for that, I was a part of some legislation that a person lost their life. And I feel your pain, I feel what you're saying. I was a part of it, but it was not meant as to how it turned out, but I feel your pain. In fact, today, just me coming in this chamber with this jacket on, I sit down, friend of mine, Mr. John Settle, and Councilman Fuller will witness it, he talked about my jacket, I just put it on as a jacket, but it brought attention. And when something brings attention, then it makes you uncomfortable. So I, I feel your pain. And like I said to Councilwoman Fuller, that I was going to support her on it, because like I say, every day from that day to this one, I feel something. I don't feel the same thing you feel because that was your brother, but I feel something that I was a part of some legislation that somebody lost their life, and I'm just flexing. Everybody just, like she said, just go into her world for just a moment, go into their world, that why did your brother, why did your son get killed because his pants were sagging? I just, that's something that I'm sorry, I, I mean, I ask for your forgiveness, we didn't mean any harm in doing it, but it was for a specific time at that particular time. So whatever I can do to make that right, and my vote today will not bring your brother back, but I will do my part as to trying to make it right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chris Lyon, five oh nine Market Street. I'm going to read a little thing that I've written here. This proposed amendment will not remove the legal concerns surrounding the abridging of rights of expression, and as Mr. Harville just said, no substitution will suffice for the complete repeal of this ordinance. We are at a precipice, a fork in the road. We must find the strength to make a fundamental change in the way Shreveport treats its citizens. We need to ask why this is on the books in any fashion, in any way. The people I've heard talk about keeping the law or making a version that appears to reduce the punishment speak from a place of wanting to give the police tools to approach because it is what they believe keeps them safe. What fear is it in our community that convinces us that keeping a version of the books makes us safer? The ACLU has spoken, our own public defender has shared his thoughts. This amendment is one of fear and trying to legislate morality for an entire community. Let us move past this proposed amendment and get on with the business of making a better
Should Anthony Childs have worn this?
Yes.
Or is that unconstitutional? By the way, my name is Doc Montgomery, I live in one twenty-four Merrick Street. I'm looking at here, and I'm seeing legislators, I'm seeing people who have the power to decide what our laws are. However, where is the background and where is your experience and education that gives you the authority to do something as unconstitutional as provide this ban? We want to talk about morality, but morality has nothing to do with constitutionality. There were things that were constitutional, it was constitutional to deprive black men of their rights. Was that moral? Was that right? I stand here because I look and I see legislators who have power and the people who don't recognize how their power affects the people. I want it to be known that each one of you has a responsibility to the public. We want to say that Anthony Childs was just another black man that was murdered, the blood is on our hands. We give the police this kind of power, however, we never talk about the laws that the police break. For instance, if you look at some of the officers in the room, they have a flag on their, they have a patch flag, which is a black and white flag with a blue stripe across the middle. That is a violation of Louisiana Revised Statutes fourteen, one hundred and seventeen, flag desecration. As a public defender for the Cattle Parish, I find it appalling that we are still even having this conversation. Thank you.
My name is Rhea Jones, forty-two twelve Pines Road, Shreveport, Louisiana. I've heard individuals come up here and speak about the community and about how young men wear their clothes. At one time or another, I'm seventy-six years old, we've all had different fashions. I helped police on beaches where you can see the private parts of men and women. They wasn't shot, it was accepted. This is about how we legislate and the people who vote you in to legislate for them. We have no right to tell individuals how to dress, because this country is multicultural. It has people from everywhere, and they have a right to dress the way their culture and their socio-cultural setting give them. They have that right. That right was given to us in the Constitution. How can our legislators in, that these people voted in, go by this law in any kind of way? I've heard people come up here and speak and talk about pulling your pants up in school and all of that stuff. It has nothing to do with what we are talking about. We are talking about an unjust law. It's just, if you can't see that, you have no business sitting in this seat. Anyone who stands before this pulpit and speak to you have no business speaking to you if they support any part of this, because we all come from different countries, different places, different communities. What are we going to do, legislate that? I don't want to get upset, that's why I'm kind of shaking. Because- Because if you young men, and you're younger than me, you know the law. My grandson just got through speaking. What if there had have been him shot down? He has several degrees and several different things. Because the people where he went to school was accepted his dress and who he was. I, I don't want to hear us talking about no black and white issues or nothing. We're talking about dress. What are we going to do, get to shooting a person down because they wear a suit and tie? Thank you guys.
Good afternoon. Um, I am Barbara Smith Iverson, 4119 Greenwood Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7119. I come today to say that I am against amending. I am a mother of two great African-American males. I stand before this council today not only for my sons, but for every child in Cattle Parish. To have this kind of, I would call abusive ordinance over these children is abuse to me. No child in Cattle Parish should have to be afraid of law enforcement approaching them behind what they're wearing. I'm an educator myself, and kids come to school dressed to show their own inner, their own personal fashion. When you look at the young lady here, she wears red glasses, I love that. When you look at Councilman Fuller, beautiful turquoise necklace, I love that. And to give law enforcement the authority to, to approach these children is, to me, is totally abusive. I ask that you please look at what you're doing and vote the right way on behalf of our children in Cattle Parish school, school system, or just the city of Shreveport. Thank you.
I'm Anna Marie Arpino, 131 128 East Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Most of you know me as a Merrill candidate. I come here today because I love my city. I love a unified city. City I grew up 55 years ago, we didn't have these issues. We elected you all, hopefully, for common sense and for decency. If you don't want to be approached by a police officer because your, your pants are down, your ass is out, and your underwear is showing, don't do it. Pull them up and put a belt on it when you leave out of your home, and they probably will not bother you if that's the ordinance. Number one. Number two, I don't think sagging pants was the reason of, of someone being either shot himself or shot or whatever. I think the word is running. Every time I hear one of these cases, the police officer is saying, "Stop, stop, stop." They're continuing to run. We have to respect law enforcement. When they ask us something, do it. Almost every case, look at the facts, go back and look at the cases. There's a police officer saying, "Stop," or "Put your hands down," or "Don't touch your gun." There's no listening. Now, I don't know whether he had a, a permit to carry a concealed weapon, if this thing was down in his drawers, I don't know if it was registered correctly. Those are laws too. But please don't repeal this. We need our city to have decency on what people look at and see. I know I'm probably from a different generation than the ones that wear these sagging pants. I asked someone this weekend, who was African-American, 21 years in the federal prison system for criminal justice. And I said, "What does it mean sagging? Is that their style? Help me here." No, and it came from the prison system where I work, more so state than my federal system, for, for gays and, and advertisement. It's not, it's not a culture thing, okay? And that's what she told me. I can only believe what I've told somebody that knows that I don't. But please, don't repeal this. We need this ordinance, we also need other ordinance, like the blackened glass that we have to pull up next to, the people that, that are hanging on their cell phones, driving, distracted with all the accidents and the loud music. There's other ordinance, please don't take those off either. But please, please, let's remain respectful in what we look like, dress like in our community. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Willis Brown, 5610 Buncombe Road. And I'll be issue with everything that just came out your mouth. And let me say this, I'm the mother of three black men. Their ages 26, 27, and 31. And this is not about black men with saggy pants. This is about boys that are faddish. It is a fad, okay? There's a lot of things that we do and we do differently, but this is done because it is a fad. My sons are professionals, their pants are kinds of sagging, you don't see their underwear. They do have long shirts on, they do have jackets that professional, but they have more fiber. Okay? TLC is a rap group of girls. Their pants are sagging. So are you going to stop females like myself because my pants are sagging? Are you going to stop me because my pants are sagging because I've lost weight? Are you going to stop me because of the way I'm dressed, because you don't like the way I dress, you don't like the way I talk, you don't like anything about me? Why are you stopping me? And if you're stopping me for a reason, there's a way to stop a black man from running. If he's running away from you, there's an issue. There are support systems, there's a tens of, of police officers, and it can be more than one police officer. You have police cameras. There's several different things that you can do to prevent somebody from hurting you. But instead, you're quick to pull your weapons out. You're quick to just stop them and question them. And this is an integrity issue. And not every police officer is a bad police officer, they're not a bad, they're not bad people. They're not. We need them. The fire department, all of you guys, everybody here has a moral right to live the way they want to live, to say what they want to say, and to do things that the way they want to do them, as long as they don't offend or affect other people in a negative manner. And you guys are taking people's rights and you're creating ordinances to allow people the ability to pull people aside for absolutely no reason. And it's wrong. I don't care how you flip it, I don't care how you guys state it, it is wrong and you need to reevaluate it. And when you have the opportunity, if ever given, to adopt a black child, or a black son, or to raise a black child, or a biracial child, which I am, then you let me know the difference between what's black right and what's indifferent, because I see gray. I see right, wrong, and I see gray. And you council people, I want you to understand that these are my positions of superiority. These are a position that are supposed to reflect the values and the morals of the people who put you in your seats. And we respect what you platform on. We stand behind you, whether sometimes you're right or sometimes you're wrong. We're here for you, but we're supposed to do this together. I did not change my residency to, from Texas to Shreveport, to sit here and allow things that you guys know are wrong, to just stand there and not be heard, or not say something about it. If you see something, you say something. And if something is wrong, then we need to stand up, but we need to do it in an ethical and a moral way so that we're in agreement. We can agree to disagree. We don't have to have outbursts, we don't have to act ignorant, we don't have to shout and scream or whatever, but let me say this, people act accordingly. Some people are giving you what you're giving them. And sometimes it's just your mere expression, you don't realize if you're like me, sometimes my face speaks volumes. So I wish everybody would be cognizant to people's emotions and feelings here so that we can be the same way with you all. But I respectfully disagree with you. And I hope that through all of this, you'll learn something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ebony Mitchell, 3202 Blanchard Road. I'm representing myself as a private citizen, I have now a property and everything, but I'm here as a private citizen right now. I am here to speak against the amendment of the sagging ordinance law. From my understanding, there is already an indecency ordinance or law on the books, right? So to me, this was overkill. There, there needs to be a, a definite, what's indecent and what's inappropriate. Something might be inappropriate, that's not mean that you're, that you have committed any crime, right? So I, I appeal to this legislative body to listen to the, to words of the people and to the ACLU, like the gentleman that stated, has called on you to repeal this law. I wasn't prepared to speak, so I really don't have anything profound to say except for that we will be here every city council meeting on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, on Friday, whenever. We will be here, um, we're going to stay here, and we're going to make sure that this law is repealed and that everybody's voice is heard, whether they voted for you or not. If we are resident of Cattle Parish, of Shreveport, we have a right to be heard and we have a right to you to listen to us, right? Amen.
I am the cousin of Anthony Childs, and I wanted to come in front of you guys today. My address again is 237 Roundly Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. I work in Shreveport and I go to school in Shreveport. But I wanted to come in front of you guys because I know this has been a known topic and from what one of the ladies said about sagging, it started in the penitentiary. No, sagging, she said sagging. Sagging did not, it starts in the elementary school when the kids get up and their mom don't have enough money to keep two or three belts in the house for them to put pants on. So they sagging in school too, so they're not just sagging in the streets. You know, they, they sagging everywhere. So are we going to label the kids for sagging? The little bitty kids that their mama don't have enough money to buy them a belt, you know? But anyway, this is why I'm here. I want to know if the lady that had an interaction with Anthony Childs and Officer Brooks come before you and swear in and tell you that they knew each other before February 5th, 2019, will you guys take a look at that case again? If she comes forth and say, "I know that these two guys had altercation about me," will y'all take it in consideration and looking at that?
Is that a, I mean, you, you asking a question?
Yes, I'm asking a question.
I think that that's, and I could be wrong if, if the clerk can correct me on it, I think that's something to take to the DA's office? Am I, am I correct on that? To the detectives and the DA?
I think if they, she has information that would be useful to the police, it ought to come forward, she ought to come forward with it.
To the detectives, Shreveport Police Detective, law enforcement, okay?
See, because we don't want it to get pushed under the rug, we want it to bring it into you guys first, so you guys will know what's going on. If she comes forth and swearing in and say that Anthony Childs and Officer Brooks had an encounter before February 5th, 2019, will you guys stand behind us and stand behind the Shreveport Police Department to go and open this investigation up?
I can't, I, I can't see why not. Let me say that, I cannot see why not. But again, I'm not law enforcement, so, but I can't see why not, why they would not.
Okay, but you guys represent the city of Shreveport, right? Y'all represent the city of Shreveport, right?
Ma'am.
Y'all represent Shreveport, right?
Ma'am, what you do is, the next council meeting, whoever desire to come before this body has that right. And I just ask that you would invite them to come.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So what, what are my steps? What do I do? Who do I take them to?
Once you get them, once you get out there, fill out the form, you give it to the clerk, they'll pass it down to the vice chair, and when the time come, just put on there what they're going to speak about, and they will have that right.
Okay, one, I have one more thing to talk about. My family had an event, May 31st, 2019, at Holiday Inn. Officer Brooks knew that that was my family. He did, he offered to do security for our family. He knowingly knew that that was our family. So what do y'all have to say about that?
Ma'am, that's, that's out of our, excuse me, that's out of our jurisdiction. It would go through the police department as to that. That would be out of our jurisdiction.
Chair, may I?
Councilwoman Fuller.
Um, the ACLU contact that made the statement that went out to all of us by email also reached out to me to put your family in touch with them so that you actually can have some competent legal advice and support and advocacy for your family.
Okay, we just feel like when you, he, he, he had no business being there. And when he knew it was us, if he stayed, he didn't know it was us?
I can't, I can't discuss that with you right now, because we do have to move on, but know that the statewide professional legal advocates do want to work with you all.
We want Officer Brooks gone from the Shreveport Police Department. Because if he don't, it's, somebody else is going to die.
Okay. Councilman Brooks.
Um, I, I would, would hope that, that this information has been passed on to the Shreveport Police Department. And Mayor, I would hope that you would have Chief Raymond and the detectives that investigated this move on and, and get this information. Secondly, has the administration or the police chief thought about any officer-involved shooting? And I know we're talking about sagging pants right now, but this has been brought up, letting the state police come in to do the investigation instead of us investigating our own people? And I mean, Chief, you can, you can answer that question. I don't know. I'm just asking the question. I know in Baton Rouge, that's what's done, other cities, that's what's done. And with the atmosphere that we have right now, would that not be a good move for us to at least look into? Mayor?
Yes, so we're, we've already met with the citizens, the coalition that I referenced earlier, and we're open to reform in various ways. We're just looking at the legal constraints. So we're open to reform by doing investigations that way. Uh, and, I mean, the options are, you know, limitless, just obviously we're constrained by the law, but we're open to all of it.
Well, I would like for this to be discussed further, that, that, number one, her concerns that she brought up today, if the police department doesn't have that, which I know we're not privy to that investigation, so I want you all to know that we're not privy to that. We don't get that kind of information regardless of, if we have a phone or an email or whatever, everybody's saying, "We don't get that information." But I do feel like that it might not be a bad idea considering where we are right now and what other cities our size do, maybe letting the state police come in and investigate any officer-involved shooting in, in the city of Shreveport. So I'd like for us to kind of move forward on that if we could.
Councilman, can I defer to the city attorney on this matter? If you have any particular expertise, city attorney?
Yes, it's my understanding that there are, are other jurisdictions that do have other police agencies investigate their own agencies. That is something that can be requested. I've actually had this conversation with Chief Raymond before about doing this in the future. I would note, however, that the other agencies, the investigating agency has to be willing to take on that.
Right.
Has to be willing to take on that investigation. We cannot make them, but we can certainly make that request.
But that, that's why these public comments are so important. This is something I've been thinking about for quite a while, but hearing what she had to say just a minute ago, we really need to make sure that if there is some type of incident going on between people and it didn't get out there, and I'm not saying that the Shreveport Police Department can't do their investigations, I'm not saying that, but it does remove that, that investigating your own that I've heard. So if, if that's something we could look at, I, I think that might not be a bad idea. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. If there was no one else.
Yes, sir. Marvin Mohammed, 2808 Hershey D. Wilson. Three quick points. We want to reiterate, reiterate our call for the removal of the current police chief, Ben Raymond. We have said at several community meetings, what just been revealed till today, that, that Officer Brooks indeed knew Anthony Childs, and that the, and that the fact that he was sagging was simply a pretext that he used to, 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 to begin his chase of him. Chief Raymond on several times have stated publicly, both at the NAACP meeting that was held at Wallet Library, and also at the community hearing that was at Winfield Funeral Home. Both times, he denied any knowledge when, when this information has been given. Both times, he denied any knowledge when this information has been given, in fact, to the Shreveport Police Department and its office. So, as to the sagging pants ordinance, and this is critical, especially with the revelations that the young lady just brought forth, it's never, it's not about the ordinance per se. It's about the mind. It's about the one that is enforcing the law. Administration just came up with a, I believe it was styled as the environmental police team or squad. Well, what happens when that guy that has a 78 cut is in his yard? That's been sitting there for six years that he's still hoping and hoping and hoping that he get fixed one day? And that vehicle is tagged because it's a eyesore and because it's against the city, the code of ordinances? What type of interaction would it be then between that homeowner, that car owner who's still hoping that he get that car fixed? So, it's the mindset that's enforcing the law. I was fortunate enough to be at this weekend's Grand State University Scholarship Luncheon this past Saturday at Samstown. And Pastor Derwin Jackson was the keynote speaker. And he said, using the language that Chief Raymond uses, "The tool." The tool isn't the issue, going to my point, but the person who holds the tool. He spoke from a biblical perspective, saying that Moses had a staff and the magicians had a staff, but it was Moses' staff that parted the Red Sea. He spoke about that it was David who had a slingshot, just like any other many lads had a slingshot during that time, but it was David who slingshot slew the lion. He spoke about that it was Samson that had the strength of great men, but it was him who was a dowel with the strength to slay many, with the jawbone of an ass, if you will, to take out many. And then he concluded it with saying that it was also many, 2,000 years ago, that was crucified, but it was in fact the nails in Jesus' hands that all gave us a chance. His words. And so, this is why we call for the removal of Chief Raymond. This is why we call for the immediate firing of Officer Brooks. This is why we call for an investigation and inquiry into the Cattle Parish Coroner Office, which we believe that Coroner Tonan conspired and he was neglectful, up to the point of actually being, where he could be charged criminally with malfeasance in office when he failed to do gunshot residue tests to prove. They say, as I close, Chairman Bowman, he says that the narrative is that Officer Brooks never got within two to three feet to Anthony Childs. We don't know that to be the case. They say that he shot from a distance of 20 to 25 feet. Then why, Mr. Coroner, would you not do the test to prove that in fact, that Anthony Childs did in fact shoot himself and died from a self-inflicted gunshot wound? These are the things that we need to look at. The bigger picture is that three black men have been killed in the city of Shreveport in the last 120 days. Let's not forget that. And when you look at that, you can look at that individual and say, "Well, that guy did this and that guy was being tracked down for this and this guy." But the fact is, is that the Shreveport Police Department as a whole now is known to the loss of death. No one wants to see any officer of this great city not go home at the end of his shift. But what we also would not give up is our right to return back to our families as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. All right, now, if there is no one else to speak on or against adding this legislation to the agenda, then I'll just call for the vote and we'll move forward.
Is there a motion in second? Was there a motion in second?
I think it was. If it wasn't, then I, if it was not, then I'll just make a motion to add.
I'll second.
Okay. And add by the chair, second by Councilman Flur. Motion fails. Four, three. All right. I did miss Mr. Holmes, Mr. Benson Holmes? I didn't see that he was in the audience. I'm sorry.
I know it's been pretty tense and I was late earlier for the meeting when they talked about Carla Cooks, but I just wanted to come and reiterate that not only do I love Shreveport, not only do I love the city council, not only do I love the attorneys and everyone who supports the staff, I love the people of the city. I am the new chairman of the Let the Good Times Roll Festival and I'm hearing everyone speaking and it's very passionate. And I just want us to come together and unify as one as a city, not just, you know, African-Americans, white people. I want everyone to come together and I want us all unified as a city. And I think the great opportunity for the Let the Good Times Roll Festival, because it is a festival supporting the city of Shreveport, Shreveport, Boja. So, I'm excited, I'm really passionate hearing everyone speak about what's going on in the city. And I think we all should just be able to come together, unify as one. So, I'm happy to announce about the 30th Annual Let the Good Times Roll Festival and I just want everyone to come out and let's have a great time together.
Okay. What's the date, again, what's the date of that?
It's June the 21st to the 23rd. That's next weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. All right. Now we have the following request to speak.
Mr. Harvey Clay.
Let me tell you something. I come to complain.
State your name and address, just for the record.
My name is Harvey Clay. I run a restaurant at 5863 Fairfield Avenue. It's called Real Barbecue &amp; More. Been a good citizen, try to do the right thing to make it better. The city has a problem with the sewer system. It's caved in under the building. And the consequence of setting up to try to correct the issues that the city has has been addressed in the most god-awful way for this business. There are two black businesses on our corners, both of them severely affected. We're off about 60 percent. They have unmitigated gall to plan to close off Piermont and Fairfield and the driveway to get in on Piermont and have to go down past Cuban Liquor to go down to Southfield, turn left on Fairfield, and they have signs saying, "Road closed ahead." Unbelievable. The city engineer that planned that and the city engineer planned that road closing without care, concern, and disdain for Real Barbecue &amp; More. And I don't like it. I am completely ticked off. This is what drives people crazy and have them act crazy. And I've been on the verge of that. Had a guy backed up with his truck and blocked the driveway to unload equipment and there was no access to the restaurant at all. Would you go to any other business and do that on yearly trial? I don't think so. The sewer system has caved in under the building. There is an issue. I understand that. But we have a right to live. The fact that it happened before I got there and the other people in the restaurant had sewer issues and sewer gas coming in, I got approved for the permit to open the business, strained to get in because the MPC gave us the hardest time in the world, had to cook in one place on Lion Avenue and bring the food to Fairfield for four months because I couldn't get the right kind of approval to open the restaurant the right way. So, I had to say to Heckred, "I'm gonna do what I gotta do in spite of how you treat me. I'm gonna live anyway, but you throw me in the ocean and when you see me bobbing and trying to float, you start taking shots at me to make sure that I don't survive. I'm not gonna accept it." You owe me money because you hurt the business financially with a city problem, not a Harvey Clay or Real Barbecue problem. This is a city of Shreveport problem. I pay my taxes on two homes in Shreveport, pay taxes on all of them, and I've operated a business in three different locations. And when I moved to the great site there of Fairfield and Piermont, the harassment level went up to a new level. And the only difference between me and the other operators in the restaurant, and I hate to play the race card, but it is a race card and I'm playing it. And it's a financial card that I'm playing. When you interrupt a guy's business, a family business, me, my wife, my daughter, and four grandchildren, you hurt my family, I feel like hurting your family. I'm just telling you. That's what happens mentally.
If I may ask.
Stressed out.
You are, you're in my district and you have fed me more times than you may know.
I recognize you.
I appreciate your business very much. I'd like to understand first whether you received any notice from the city that this was going to happen before they cut off access to your business?
Not that time. They talked about it a year ago.
Okay.
And they told me there would always be a driveway open and always have access.
Is that true?
And you know what? Work has been done in a week.
I did not.
Zippity-doodah, nothing!
And I will, I will say that a relative of yours contacted me late last night by Facebook and I sent an email very late last night to the city engineer and to Ms. Jones sitting to my right and asked them to provide me an update on the status of your business. It's obviously unacceptable for access to your business to be completely cut off and I hope that the city engineer and the rest of the administration will take action as soon as possible to change that situation. I've made that request.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but I'm a little, you can tell I'm tragically upset.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Jones, you got any information on?
I don't have any at this moment. I've asked the city engineer to come to the chambers.
Okay.
So, when I see him and he gets here, then we would like to kind of get an update and find out what happened.
When the engineer gets here, maybe we can put it aside.
Put it on the agenda to figure out how to pay me too. It's called repairrations. Repair me for the damage that you've done. We've been smelling sewer gas since we've been there. It's the city of Shreveport. I've been, the guy said, "I'm surprised you even opened because the other restaurants had sewage coming up in the building?" Nobody ever told me that. The landlord, the city inspection department is a problem. And you can tell by the tone of my voice, I'm not gonna sit down soon, 'cause you need to understand how deep this is. A guy backed his truck up and blocked the driveway yesterday. He has 30 feet in front of him that he can pull up and allow the driveway to be open. The driver refused to move. Two women are trying to get into the driveway and people are walking a block, block and a half to come and eat with us.
Okay. Well, she's talking to the city engineer now, so as soon as available, then if you're gonna be around, I'm assuming.
Yeah, Mr. Clay, the city engineer will address you. He wasn't hitting here, so the CAO is just giving him an update about your concerns right now, but on behalf of the city of Shreveport, I greatly apologize for the inconvenience you've had and we'll look into whatever we can to assist. The people doing our consent decree work is our project managers and their subcontractors, so it's not a direct line to the city of Shreveport. Usually, somebody will complain to them and then it has to get back, so it takes some time. And I'll let the city engineer elaborate on this.
Okay, but I started calling you three days ago. I did have a representative from your office call me back and give an explanation.
That's why I'm about to say, Mr. He's here.
I'm sorry?
He's here. That's the city.
I'm saying, just give me a second.
No, but your timer's up is what I'm saying. I understand.
So, you want me to sit down?
No, I want you to talk to him so we can help resolve your problem. Mr. Clay, would you like him to make public comments or do you want to talk to the city engineer?
You can talk about it publicly. It's a public circumstance.
Well, I just want, whatever you're comfortable with.
I'm gonna tell you, I want to figure out, how you gonna address the financial issue that I just presented to you too?
I think that would be best addressed with risk management, Mr. Clay. If you have a claim against the city, there's a process for making it.
Say it again, please. I can hear you very well.
We have a risk management department and if you have a claim against the city, then you certainly are free to make that, but that's just not something we can decide right now. We don't have that authority today.
I understand, but I'm asking you to use your leverage, since you are the overseers of the city, to use your leverage to go and apply the right circumstance so they say, "Listen, we're gonna investigate this, we're gonna figure out the right thing to do, how to make us home."
Yes, sir.
When there's an injury, then you need to repair it.
Mr. Clay, I'm on the risk management. I will do exactly what you just said and we'll get it resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. Mr. Sammy Mears.
Do we want Patrick to address his concerns?
If he'll talk to Patrick outside, yeah, that's fine.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, 71101. I did have something else I was wanting to say, but I'm going to delete that so that I can say that this will be 30 years that I will be helping with the MDA tele, well, not telethon, but it will be 30 years. And if anybody would like to try to help me out with that, with possibly any donations after the meeting, please see me if you can. I've gotten a little help so far and hope to do the best I can for this year. Also, I'd like to say that I'll accept your donations and give to the MDA after the meeting, but I just, I just think in my mind, how could this be 30 years already? I've been doing it for so long and I've been keeping track 30 years. Even I'm surprised. And it will be 30 years very soon. And I've got something I'd like to say as well about what happened. See, about two weeks ago, on May 28th, when somebody was being removed here from the chambers, I was about five or six inches from being hit in the front row and I don't wish to be a punching bag for anyone. This is something I had to say and I thank you for the apology earlier, Chairman Jerry and from everybody else. It really meant a lot to me. I'm not gonna be a punching bag for anybody, not here in the chambers or nor out there. I just don't want to be such a thing. And I'd also like to say that it was just a bunch of ridiculous nonsense and I hope that it never happens again. And of course, I did get an apology from Chief Raymond, so I want to thank everybody here, even though you might not have said it out loud, I just want to thank you for the apology. And of course, when I felt the way I did, I started feeling like Dr. Phil looks in one way and then Beavis and Butthead in another.
Chairman.
Councilman Buck.
Sammy, I want to also apologize. I watched it, I saw what happened and you, whenever I was elected to the council, you greeted me and kinda showed me the ropes. So, I wanted to apologize that that happened to you. Also, I'd like to commend you for your 30 years of service to muscular dystrophy.
I said it.
And thank you. Thank you for doing that.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Green.
Also, Sammy, thank you for the phone call and I didn't take it lightly, I just didn't have the words to say, so, but I'm right with them. Thank you, Sammy.
Mr. Lamar Holman.
He left.
Freddie Eshola homeless. I'm gonna fence some people real quick, but that's your problem, not mine. I wish the woman with the black and red sweater was still here. If anybody has her contact information, I'd love to speak to her myself to address her stupidity and her ignorance. Sagging was started in the days of slavery when white men sodomized and raped black men in order to break them, right? So, let's get that very clear. Second, Sammy, you need to stop being so soft, right? Niggas have been getting beat up. Niggas have been getting beat up in this city for years, for decades. I just finished getting whipped over at CCC in the city jail and you're talking about five inches away from your face, man, stop being soft.
Freddie, Freddie, Freddie.
Let's be exceedingly, I'm not done, I'm gonna finish what I need to say.
Freddie, we're not gonna use that word.
So let's be exceedingly clear. You work for me, I work for you.
You're right, I do work for you.
You work for me, I work for you.
We have to be respectful.
Neither of you have the right to tell me what I can and can't say.
We have to be respectful.
My first amendment, I'm going to do, I'm gonna say what I need to say. My First Amendment rights give me the authority to do so, sir.
Freddie.
The authority.
But we're gonna be respectful, sir. That's all I'm asking.
If they get offended, that is their problem for being soft mentally. That is not my issue.
Please don't use that language.
Let's be exceedingly clear, when it comes to the police in our city, when it comes to the individuals up here, that is your problem, not mine. You all work for me.
Well, break it. Well, break it. Get some, well, break it. You need a good babysitter?
I have. Well, you know what, I did, I took it like a little.
Oh, I can't watch it. Are you gonna do that? I must have really liked it. Well, we lost our forum. Um, had an outbreak, um, outdoors.
Why are we, why are we in the meeting, Mr. Chairman?
Let, let me say this, we're, we're still on, under public comment.
Okay.
But when we don't have, uh, four members of the council here, then we do not have a forum.
That's right.
And that, that holds up the meeting from moving forward.
Okay.
So we didn't have four.
Okay.
Which, for obvious reasons.
Okay.
No.
So we, we back on track?
We are back on track.
Yes.
And I'm just asking that everyone would be respectful, um, during the time of a public comment, that's it.
Jerry Hilt or Milt, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
Hilt.
Jerry Hilt. Ms. Hilt.
She's probably there.
Sarah Abear.
Hi, I'm Sarah Abear, I live at eight one eight Sawani in Captain Shreve. It's a great neighborhood and I actually came here today to speak and support the repeal of the sagging pants ordinance. Really appreciate that you all are taking time to listen to everyone today. It means a lot to me to see public discourse happening around this cause and I'm really glad that I personally came today to hear Mr. Child's family speak because it has moved me so greatly. My remarks are prepared in support. I agree, this is a, an ordinance that is discriminatory, um, but I also wanted to speak to you as a marketing professional. Over the past ten years, I've worked in marketing and animation, video games, virtual reality with creative professionals and occasionally because of my work, I have been invited to meetings here locally to help bring more creative people and more technology professionals to the area. And often a question that we ask is what can we do to attract more of these workers? Um, one way to make a difference here is to advance policies that position our city as progressive, inclusive and supportive of everyone. This ordinance does the opposite. In fact, I frequently hear from my clients who are all over the United States that they don't understand why I continue to work in Shreveport or Louisiana because all they hear from this area is really negative stuff and the positive stuff they hear from me. This ordinance is another message to the public that our city is backwards and frankly, it's embarrassing and disheartening for someone like me who is an advocate for the city. Ordinances like this were encountered to our positioning that Shreveport is a progressive place to do business. It shows that perhaps our city is more concerned with how these people dress than how we are employing them and that we're more concerned with ways to police young black men than ways to build a bright and vibrant economy with them. Thank you, I would like to rescind the rest of my time to give more people to speak. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Lee Harville.
Good afternoon. I'm hoping that in giving this, that you do the right thing and rescind the ordinance today. However, given something that Mayor Perkins said at the last day, I appreciated that you want to get rid of this ordinance as quickly as possible. For that, I would ask you to take one further step that I believe you and the city attorney are positioned to do if the council does rescind the law. I would ask that you immediately inform the prosecutors in city court that they are no longer to prosecute any pending cases for this ordinance if it is repealed. And, and I say that for this reason, Monday I had a, a case where a gentleman, um, is currently under district attorney's probation for that. If you could instruct your prosecutors that they're to null prosecute or dismiss any case, whether it's pre-arrement, whether it's set for diversion or, uh, further proceedings, trial or district attorney's probation, just terminate those cases. It would give effect to retroactively what this council is wanting to do, would relieve a lot of people of financial burdens and of the possibility of going to jail and it would be yet another shining example for the progressive nature of our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Attorney.
If I could just note, um, if the ordinance is repealed, it takes approximately under the charter, seven days, seven, uh, calendar days for, uh, it to go into effect, uh, once the mayor has signed it. Um, however, I will take your comments under, under consideration and I will discuss it with my prosecutors.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharon Smith.
Sorry, I got so excited last time, I just jumped up here and it wasn't my turn. Okay, obviously, I'm also here to speak against, um. Give your name and your address. Oh, I'm sorry, I even wrote it down, I didn't do it. Um, Erin Smith, two seven one Patton Avenue, seven eleven oh five. Um, so I also think we should get rid of the pants ordinance. Um, everyone here who's already spoken have given fantastic reasons as to why this should go away for our city. Um, obviously, our police officers are not the fashion police and we don't want them to be, um, so they have much, we all know we have much bigger crime issues in our city that they should be worried about. Um, and we also all know that the ACLU and everyone across the country has their eyes on Shreveport right now and not for a good reason. This is something that was silly when it, not to offend anyone here who may have been present when it happened, but it was silly in two thousand and seven and it's still silly today. We know, we all know that this targets young black males. It's obvious, we all know it and obviously it affects plumbers as well. I mean, seriously, but when you look at the stats from, that the Shreveport Times dug up, the people who have been victim to this are young black males, they're not plumbers. I mean, I don't know all their professions, but I'm assuming they're not all plumbers. So we know why they're being targeted. It's giving our police another reason to, to talk to them, to find out something else that's gone wrong, just as Anthony Child's family has, has so wonderfully and in such a composed way advocated for today and in the last few weeks. Additionally, if anyone would like to Google it, um, the Supreme Court is also extremely against these things. Um, giving offense is a viewpoint. According to Supreme Court Justice Samuel A. Alito Jr., we've said time and again that the public expression of ideas may not be prohibited merely because the ideas are themselves offensive to some of their hearers or in this case, wearers. We're setting ourselves up for lawsuits, as the ACLU pointed out yesterday. Ones our city honestly and police department cannot afford to pay. We're working on a dissent decree, as Mr. Clay, you know, talked about earlier. We all know that there are lots of issues our city is working on, budget constraints and whatnot, we can't afford to have a lawsuit like this and it's gonna be a big one if we have it. So with that, it's obviously up to you guys, but I think you've heard from plenty of citizens here today and I know you all have talked about people emailing or calling or Facebook messaging you, saying that they want it, but I think the ones who've gotten up and spoken today have given you hardcore facts as to why this is, this needs to go away and not be something that Shreveport is known for. Thank you.
Mr. Christopher Lyon.
Christopher Lyon, five zero nine Market Street, I'll read a prepared statement. The United States was founded on a concept that all people should be free from oppression of their government and that the government should protect the freedoms of all. We have fought wars over it, Americans have dedicated their lives and some have given theirs to protect that concept. Through the focus, uh, though the focus of this repeal has been on the violation of freedom of speech, which it is, and that it's discriminatory, which data proves, there's an equally grave concern that we should be talking about. While the intent of this law, some may say, was to inspire young people to dress a way that communicates a traditional sense of social value, which is a questionable use of the legislative system, we must confront the reality that this ordinance has been used beyond its original intent and has resulted not only in the abridging of constitutional rights of freedom of expression, but also the freedom from illegal search and seizure by creating additional circumstances to consider in the totality of circumstances that give public safety, safety officials reasonable suspicion that justify what are known as Terry stops. If this, as Chief Raymond said in the committee meeting, the community meeting some weeks ago, is considered a tool in the belt of the Shreveport police, there's a much more difficult challenge that we can no longer, that we can no longer ignore and that is that the laws are tools that can be used in whatever fashion needed to form the basis of reasonable suspicion to justify interactions with citizens that can end in arrest, incarceration and violence. According to data provided by SPD, the majority of these citations for sagging pants were the whole reason for the initial stop and I can't help but wonder, what other laws does this city have on the books that are used in this manner? It is disturbing that several ordinances could be and reports indicate that they have been used as the whole justification for a stop where there was no other reason to do so, becoming a means to an end rather than the end itself. To say that this does a disservice to our community is a gross understatement. At the last city council meeting and just here today, public defender for city court Lee Harville spoke at length about how these issues not only hurt the arrested or cited, but also every citizen in the community by spending valuable tax dollars, creating hindrances in the workforce, which in turn hurts our local economy. And for what? There's a scourge on our community, remnants of an old school thinking that has led us not out of the valley, but deeper into it. This whole conversation calls for a much more far-reaching and fundamental assessment of how our public safety officials use the law and provides insight into why this trust of the police in our community is high. Trust is foundational to the concept of community policing, something that many of you and the mayor, uh, embraced during the most recent election and right now, the Shreveport police does not have the trust of the community that needs them the most. I applaud you all for taking this matter seriously and call on the, the council and the public safety committee to objectively look at all ordinances with assistance from the public and legal professionals to determine which laws are easily abused, require no hard evidence to convict, especially those which are, uh, result in the criminalization of constitutionally protected freedoms or which are in practice used in ways that they are not intended. Furthermore, I call for an assessment of the SPD procedures and an audit of the de-escalation training which Raymond says has been implemented because if it has been, uh, implemented, then they are either being ignored or in need of reform. Thanks so much.
Ms. Rachel Willis Brown.
Hi, I'm Rachel Willis Brown, fifty-six ten Buncombe Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven twenty-nine. This isn't about the ordinance, I said what I needed to say about that. This conversation that I'm having is in front of council, but it's really directed to you, Mayor Perkins. And I want you to receive it as respect and love coming from me, but in disappointment. I need to say what I need to say and then I'm, I'm done with it, okay? I'll support you a hundred percent whether or not I'm on your team or not, okay? But I'm one of the many volunteers that joined your movement early. I heard your vision, embraced your vision and walked the streets campaigning with you. Upon your election, you were excited, we were excited and proud of the work that we've done. Since the election, I and others have seen a lack of leadership. You are one hell of a leader in the campaign. We're disappointed and discouraged at the lack of commitment to the promises and vision that you expressed. I am only here because of the difficulty and lack of responsiveness, of responsiveness from you regarding specific issues. My texts, emails, requests for meetings have gone ignored or redirected to a subordinate of yours. These referrals have been a waste of my time and yours because the internal miscommunication that has halted progress. As an original member of your team, you can imagine my disappointment of having to address you in this manner, but I'm here today to address a larger disappointment. For example, although you admitted some lack of specific inexperience with city government, you indicated that you would put together a team of capable, qualified and committed professionals to help move the city forward. Instead, we have seen a parade of persons whose credentials, qualifications have been questioned and don't seem to know the protocol of processes of city government, which have led to the many challenges that you currently face. And those of us that have proven track records of, track records of success and have, they have been rejected by you with no apparent explanation or communication by you. I didn't wear Chirica or Chenarica shirt, I wore yours. It's difficult to reconcile the speeches that you gave and the conversations we had prior to election with the actions that you currently are displaying. Example, low communication and unwillingness to support those that supported you, your lack of responses to inquiries regarding the new direction you've taken, you're moving in a direction that appears to be different from what you articulated to us. We're concerned that you pushed away those of us that were committed to fulfilling the vision that you expressed. The text I sent you indicating my disappointment represents what many of us feel and that you've become a misguided, or you've become misguided and are no longer on the same platform that we were on. Until you stand by the promises and commitments and address the true concerns of the citizens that you supported, you'll continue this path of questionable ethics, morals and effectiveness as a mayor. It is my hope that you hear and appreciate my concerns and make the necessary adjustments before you push away all of those who shared your vision and trusted you, even though we don't recognize you or the vision at this point. This city cannot afford incompetence and it can't afford for you to fail.
Ms. Gray, your time is expired, ma'am. Thank you for your remarks.
Excuse me, can I, I'm on my last sentence.
That's up to the chairman, ma'am. Go for it.
It's, it's on my, it's my last sentence. Okay, all I'm saying is, the city can't afford incompetence or for you to fail. I simply want to remind you as to why you were elected and why we believed in you and that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Mr. Byron Wilcott.
My name is Byron Wilcott, forty-two fourteen Shreveport, Caldwell, uh, I'm sorry, forty-two fourteen Caldwell Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. Thank you for counsel and Mayor Perkins for letting me speak to y'all. Uh, I want to thank Jerry Bowman and Mayor Perkins and Levette Fuller, Council, Councilwoman Levette Fuller and Councilman Bowman. Uh, I want to thank you for your courage and respect for your constituents to not leave like all the other Congress, uh, councilmen's left. Um, and missed out on what was said by, uh, by the young man, Freddie, and missed out, y'all missed out on what the other lady was talking about afterwards. So I want to thank y'all for staying and listening to what your constituents have to say. Uh, we're here to advocate for the repeal of the anti-sagging law. No matter the good intentions of the ordinance, it is being used to abuse the black community. It was constitutionally wrong seven years ago and it's conscious, constitutionally wrong now. Police are using it as a way to justify violating the constitutional rights of young black men in our communities, uh, pulling them over, being able to arrest them, hold, violate their, their rights and arrest them and circumvent what the law. Um, also, a lot of people are gonna talk about that, but to me, the sagging law is really a red herring on, on what I really see in this case. And Anthony Childs wasn't stopped because his pants were sagging. Anthony Childs was stopped because Officer Travion Brooks had an indebted out against him. And it's not being investigated, it's not being talked about. The story doesn't even sound right. It just doesn't. And you know what? We've, we've talked to, uh, the police, the police chief, we've talked to the coroner, we've talked to the. like all the other congress, councilmen's left, and missed out on what was said by, by the young man, Freddie, and missed out, y'all missed out on what the other lady was talking about afterwards. So I want to thank y'all for staying and listening to what your constituents have to say. We're here to advocate for the repeal of the anti-sagging law. No matter the good intentions of the ordinance, it is being used to abuse the black community. It was constitutionally wrong seven years ago, and it's constitutionally wrong now. Police are using it as a way to justify violating the constitutional rights of young black men in our communities, pulling them over, being able to arrest them, violate their rights and arrest them, and circumvent what the law. Also, a lot of people are going to talk about that, but to me, the sagging law is really a red herring on, on what I really see in this case. And Anthony Charles wasn't stopped because his pants were sagging. Anthony Charles was stopped because Officer Trevion Brooks had an indebted out against him. And it's not being investigated, it's not being talked about. The story doesn't even sound right. It just doesn't. And you know what? We've, we've talked to the police, the police chief, we've talked to the coroner, we've talked to the DA at several meetings that Pastor Mays put on, and we've been told a lot of things that don't add up. There's no test done on GSR gunshot residue for Anthony Charles. Should have been done, wasn't done. There's no, the video, the gunshot, it doesn't make sense for Anthony Charles to shoot himself, fall on the ground, and the cop to still be hiding behind the truck and shooting him eight times. He's on the ground. He got shot in the chest, he got shot in the heart. Why'd he shoot him in the back three, three times after that if that was the first shot? And you know what? I wasn't going to say this, but I am. Trevion Brooks is a murderer. He knows Anthony Charles.
Sir, your time has expired.
And Chief Ben Raymond, either he's a liar, or he was lied to. Because Chief, you know that that story is not true, and you know that Trevion Brooks knows him.
Okay.
And I'm saying this.
You have to wrap it up.
The police department can't investigate itself. Somebody needs to continue this investigation, somebody other than the Shreveport Police Department.
Reverend Mays.
Once again, just saddened by what we continue to see go on in this city. And it is sad that we are not moving forward, but backwards. It is sad that we have to address an ordinance that on the premise was intended to have young people to pull their pants up, but we in support of appealing it because you cannot, as I said then and continue to say before this council, govern morale. We know that it's unconstitutional, and we know that this council here, Levette, thank you, but we've been trying to do something concerning the officers in this city who deem that they have the right to kill young black men. And that seems to be pushed under the table as usual. So we can't build a narrative around, it's just the sagging pants, as my brother just said. It's a problem in this city when it comes down, and we are not talking about white officers or just black officers, we're talking about those who put on that blue uniform. Somebody asked me a question earlier today. They said, what is a good officer considered of, Pastor Mays? I say, a good officer is an officer that report bad officers. To me, that's a good officer. And Mayor, I thank God for what you're trying to do, to try to move this conversation forward, but we know that we're going to have a fight with the state legislators trying to get this passed because I was one of the ones, and, and some in the audience know, that been fighting for the Citizens Review Panel for a long time. And we're going to keep fighting for it until this city recognizes that the police department cannot govern themselves. There is time to move. Black men's are being killed in this city at an alarming rate. And officers told me back then, when I said, I'm not going to stop coming down before the council, even when it wasn't popular to come. We took criticism, but we studied came. And the reason being, Mr. Mayor, is that, is that some things are bigger than yourself to where you gotta do God's will. And when God's will must be done, it must be done. And so now, we are axing, we are axing that with, with your support, with this council, to bring, to, to vote down this amendment that was done by, by one of your colleagues, and his intent was good at the time, but now, it's being used as a weapon against our people, and we can no longer allow it. So with that being said, I, I'm going to get ready to take my seat, but, but, but I am, I am very disturbed about what's continuing to go on in this city. And the council has a responsibility to hear the citizens of this city. James, I can call him anytime, some of the council members you can reach at any time. You serve the district, serve with humility. Don't tell people one thing, and then when it's time to do, you gotta do something totally different. It's time to live up to what you campaigned about. And that's why people have no confidence in government anymore, because they said these politicians will tell you what sounds good on Election Day. And when it comes down to govern, they say, I'm not going to answer your calls. But I do thank the mayor for his response to this effort. And one other thing before I leave, Mayor, do this. Mr. Savannah has done nothing wrong, and he does not deserve to be treated like this. And whoever is behind this, God is watching you. And, and, and Mayor, I supported you from the beginning and still support you to this day. An anonymous letter from someone does not constitute not having the person from which you entrusted, from you, that you had confidence in. And I heard you say this, if you didn't have any confidence in him, you would have never put him up. I have seen countless mayors.
Sir, I must know your time has expired.
Yes, sir, thank you. I have seen countless mayors come before this council, and they got their choice. Don't let anybody take your choice from you. They, they recognize all the rest of them.
Mr. Lester Smith.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Pastor Mays. Pastor. So, so you won't call me tomorrow and say, James, why did you? I left out before the speak came because I'm old. I didn't leave out.
Oh, we know that. Yeah, yes, sir, I, I respect that. I respect that.
I had to go say that.
And I, and I respect that. But what I was just explaining, that the bottom line is, is that we need to work together in this city. So, thank you, Mayor. We appreciate you. We got your letter. Our organization is continuing to meet, and we're going to continue to meet till we get some kind of resolution.
Lester Smith, 4148 Thiel Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm also here to speak on the appeal of the sagging ordinance. I just, as, as a father of two boys, I think I said this to y'all last week, I have two sons, and they sag. And when they go out the door, I'm constantly saying, boy, pull your pants up. Sometime I reach and pull them, but I know the minute they hit the driveway, I give a young me, they're red back down. So I, I think this should be done away, done away with entirely, because it, I don't care how you slice it or dice it, it affects black people, black boys, and it, and it has done that based on the statistics, the numbers that we look at. Seven hundred and something arrests, and they were African-Americans. That's, 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 that's just not a good look. And we can't, you know, I'm just, I'm disappointed in some of the things I see where our elected officials are concerned. And I understand everybody up there is human, we all make mistakes. But when somebody brings something to you, well, you don't have to like me, but you have to treat me right. I'm going to demand that you treat me right. And, and when people bring things to you, it's not about like, it's about what's right. Because you took an oath, you're an elected official, and we can be wrong as we can be, but you have to grit your teeth and bear because you are the elected official. I'm not elected, so I can say what I want to say, but I do want to do something with intellect and intelligence. I don't want to come back like a stock raving, you know, madman, anything. But you, you all, you're taking us for granted. It appears as though you're taking us for granted, and that's just not a happy look. We, 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 we got too much to look forward to, we got too much to fight for, and we got this division between, all of a certain, the politician is the, is the enemy. We, we're at odds with each other. We've got to do away with that and, and make some sense of this thing. And Mayor, if, Mr. Savannah, if that was a commitment made, I believe in commitment. I say what I say and I mean what I say. If I tell you I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to do it, irregardless of what it costs me. I'm a man of my word. If you ask me to do something, I'm going to say, I can't do it, I can't do it. If I say I'm going to do it, you can rest assured, you're going to find me there if nobody else is there, I'm going to be there. So we have got to, you know, when we say things from a political standpoint, be committed to what you say. And we have got to, we have got to come together as a people in this city because we are going back, we're going back. We've got some things we wanted, and we're still not doing any better than we were thirty, forty, fifty years ago. So let us focus on what it is that we need to do and get busy going in and stop all this divising that we have between us. Thank you.
Mr. Marvin Mohammed.
Marvin Mohammed, 2808, Hershey D. Wilson. Shreveport is in a very peculiar situation. She has an opportunity to be at the, at the epic center of, of change in America. Right now, Shreveport is in national publications for the wrong thing. This city council has the ability to swing the opinion in the right direction. I come to speak on public comments, and it's actually atrocious, the attitudes that, that the citizens are seeing and that are displaying. And in an article that was in the Shreveport Times just last week, Councilman Butcher, he referenced a historical time when someone brought a, I believe, a puppy that had transpired, and they was trying to justify added security that we now see to my right, your left, and to the back. But I remind us, at the May 27, 2014 city council meeting, then citizen Willie Bradford, and I'm going to actually put the clip on the, on the feed, he spoke for nine minutes. He, he asked for, then from city councilman chair, shine, addition of time, and he was giving that. But yet, in 2016, he asked the officers that are stationed here to walk out, an ambassador of the city of Shreveport, Dr. Bill Weiner, a man who has given great contributions to this city, all because he asked a question. It reminds me of, of the great words of Dr. Martin Luther King when he says that, that a justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. I remind the councilman from District A, in January 1995, him and one of the great architects of the Cross Value Project and others, they went to the Cattle Parish School Board meeting. They sat there, I believe it was about nine of them, and they refused to move. Now, with a wave of, of our hand, we beckoned for a citizen to be voluntarily pulled out as necessary. We can't be one way as a citizen and another way as a policymaker. To be elected is one thing, but to govern is another.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
Thank you.
Mr. Craig Lee.
Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Outlaw, waiting for you guys to get the information. A statistical analysis that was compiled in my first report done in 2001 on the fair share program, speaking on ordinance number 67 regarding the fair share program. And this gets to the heart of the issue that you guys are proposing to eliminate onsite certifications. Make sure the mayor gets one too, Jack. Make sure you get, then y'all have one for the office. I need my, I, I haven't started, I need the time, I wanted to make sure that y'all got, got that. What you're looking at is, first page, the stat sheet, these were the amount of fair share program companies, and I broke this down by designation, fair share certified, DVE, MVE, and WWE, black, other, and white. I did that for goods and services, and I did that for subcontractors. If you look in the category of white businesses who were fair share certified, you'll see that there were 36 of them in 2001. And then you go down to the MVE, which is minority business enterprise, there were 33 white firms claiming to be minority. Now, now, why is that important as it relates to this legislation? Because if you don't do investigatory things, these are violations of federal law. This will be a huge setback for the fair share program, and there are three basic reasons. The department has never been appropriately staffed. When this thing first started, there were only two employees, Sam Gillum, who was an academic, he was not a economic development specialist, and you had the person who was then a secretary, Karen Barnes, who ultimately became the director of program, and she knew nothing. Then the program went up to three employees, and that was Sam Gillum, Karen Barnes, and then based on a political hire, Mayor Cedric Glover hired his friend, and my good partner, Brady Blade, who was a professional drummer, who knew nothing about economic development as well. Number two, the department has never employed professional economic specialists. And then number three, there were never any legitimate onsite investigations ever conducted. The program was supposed to have between 10 to 20 employees, and it's never had any of that, and they haven't been professional. So in order for this program to actually work, there are six things that you guys need to look at. Number one, you need to hire staff of 10 to 20 professional economic development specialists. Number two, the additional funding that's required for the disparity study that myself and Councilman Bradford fought for over two decades to get approved, which was approved last year, that needs to be appropriately funded. There needs to be appropriate funding for the department. There needs to be a, an establishing fair share program advisory committee that will work with Quinn Eubanks. I don't have any major issues with him, but he is inexperienced in this particular capacity. I will be working with him, but at the end of the day, this is what has killed the day. And then lastly, there needs to be annual statistical analysis, profiling everything that you basically see here. If you look at page two.
Mr. Lee, your time has expired, but I, I want to ask you a question.
Okay.
Make sure I understand your position. You are expressing concern that eliminating onsite certification, site visit requirement would impede the objectives of the fair share program.
Oh, without a doubt.
You think that would be a very bad.
It would be very bad.
Are you also saying that in the past, the city has not conducted onsite certifications despite the requirement that those?
They didn't have, they didn't have the capacity to do it, nor did they have the professional expertise.
So we know it didn't happen because we didn't even have the employees.
Exactly.
Okay.
And so, lastly, if you look at the second page, and I'll give you my full report, but you'll see the, under the Hightower administration, he was reporting that fair share was at approximately 20 something percent. That's the same thing that Ali Tyler was doing. I did all of the statistical analysis, challenged the Shreveport Times to do their own independent analysis, and they came back with my results, and you can see that in the news analysis. But that's data for you from that standpoint. But yeah, we need to make sure that this ordinance does not get passed.
Let's talk offline, Mr. Lee.
All right, thanks.
I think your information's helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Rudolph Glass Jr. Mr. Glass.
Rudolph Glass, 1735 Arlington, Shreveport, 71103. This is on fair share. In the 1990s, my mother Betty Glass established Glass Enterprises, Alpha and Omega supplier. Some of you should remember her as a hard-working, dedicated businesswoman. She became a fair share participant in the late 1990s. I watched my mother work tirelessly, tirelessly on the business. Every insurance certification or requirement that was required. Every insurance certification or requirement that was required by the fair share, state, federal level, was met. After becoming a 3M distributor for the commercial care products, for one reason or another, we were unable to get real business from the city of Shreveport or Cattle Parish. There are too many loopholes and behind-the-scenes backdoor deals being made. When a millionaire business owner can put a business in his wife's name to make his business fair share qualified, or when a millionaire politician can put a business in his wife's name to become fair share qualified, then those individuals who would honestly benefit from the fair share are eliminated. This is an unfair corrupt system. I am standing here as the son of a business owner, as well as part owner, who was slapped down by a corrupt system, as it breaks my heart to think of the long, hard hours and my mothers and myself worked tirelessly to run a business to lose her life savings, being in a system that was an illusion. My mother passed about three years ago, and we were unable to continue the business because of this type of activity. So whatever you do is for its fair share. First, we need a disparity study. Even before you do that, do what you can to make it fair, because right now it's not fair. And we have people that are honest businesspeople that cannot get a fair shake, who were lied to continuously by department heads because they were told who to buy from. Keith Hightower held a check for about $5,000, because he was upset, because my mother did an interview with the Shreveport Times and told them that the fair share program was not what it could be. After conversation with him, our business went from $100,000 for one year down to pretty much maybe, maybe, maybe $25,000, maybe. So, I mean, and just to say Greg Tarver was getting the business, and it's not fair. And the people over fair share, Sam Gillum, they all knew what was going on. My mother was told-
Your time has expired, but I want to thank you for your remarks, and just reiterate what I said yesterday, which is that I'm very concerned that the fair share program accomplished its intended purpose, and that we root out any abuse of that program. It takes people with courage to speak up publicly and to reach out to public officials to let us know what's going on. So if you have specific information about abuses of the fair share program beyond what you've shared today, please direct that to my office, and I will take action on it to the extent I can as a member of the council. So thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate the remarks earlier, and the type of remarks that has been made now regarding fair share should have been a continuous dialogue over the years. We got to this point because the energy that was put toward the SAG and PANS ordinance should have also been put toward the fair share ordinance. So in talking to my council, I mean, the committee members, when it comes to that ordinance, 70, we're gonna postpone that, and we're gonna have a small emerging business task force meeting, and I'm gonna invite all the appropriate individuals to come. If we're gonna address this fair share ordinance, let's do it in totality. Let's look at it, you know, good, bad, and ugly, and we'll come back with a resolution or amendment that we think would address all the issues that has been expressed.
That sounds like a very good plan, Mr. Councilman. Thank you. Mr. Ron Hathan.
We're gonna change the subject a little bit. And I'm Ron Hathorn, 712 South Ridge, Minden, Louisiana. We're gonna talk about the, I believe, the proposed ordinance, District C, John Nicholson. I'm gonna tell you, I'm for it. I'm for the increase in the permit amount. I don't see how in the world an officer, inspection from the Fire Prevention Bureau, a car, the gas, can do it for 50 bucks a time. It's impossible. I'm for it. Okay?
Yes, sir.
I'd like one clarification on the word "display" in your ordinance. What does it mean?
This is my legislation, Mr. Hathan, and the city attorney may not be prepared to answer that question.
I am.
The change that the legislation makes is to increase the application fee, as you've indicated. I think it's a good idea for the very reasons you have articulated. It does not change the scope of what is regulated, but if that needs to be addressed, I certainly can follow up with additional legislation, please. The state law, "display" is the actual fireworks show, and I think, as the way it's written, it's like if I put it on the shelf, and it's displayed as it is written. So there is a difference in the term.
Yes, sir. I will get with Councilman Nicholson to get that clarified.
Perfect. Okay? And that is 250 per season?
If that is the pleasure of the council, that will be the deal.
Yes, sir. But in that, is it 250 per season?
Well-
Per permit?
Per, per, per minute, to my understanding, applying to each location per season.
Per season, so that July season, it will be 250, New Year's will be 250?
That is my understanding.
Perfect. Make it 500 each time, and I'll still be here.
Have a good day.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Michael Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Williams, 2101 Carver Place. There seemed to be a public outcry for justice. I would like to read a scripture, Isaiah 1:17, said, "Learn to do good, seek justice, help the oppressed, the failing cause of orphaners, and fight for the rights of widows." I think that as we approach this current issue that we're facing, after careful thought and consideration, I think I want to support the ordinance, the SAG and O, as it is, because of the culture we're in and the type of police officers that we're serving now, I have a change of heart, based on the public outcry of the people. I think it's time we try to look at it a new way, not only just change the ordinance, but also educate and still find alternatives to SAGging without having public policies and laws to talk about SAGging. It's still a national epidemic that needs to be addressed. But anyway, also, I'd like to address an issue from the National Register of Exoneration, Raising and Wrongly Convicted in the United States and America. That was an executive summary by the University of California, Irvine. It said African Americans are the only, only 13% of the American population, but a majority of the innocent defendants are wrongly convicted of crime and later exonerated. We're seeing this racial disparity for all crime, mostly defendants are innocent. Why do police officers who conduct these outrageous programs of framing innocent black defendants concentrate on African American men? I would just like to say that that was a text sent out about my involvement in to bring a smart justice initiative. I have friends all over this globe, global, all over America, that I work with throughout the country, even in Obama administration, that have proven, documented, demonstrated programs that actually work in America, trying to bring it to our city. My only role to bring in the right way foundation is to facilitate, we did this years ago when we brought LL Cool J to address crime and gangs involved in the community. I know programs that work, I've served on a national and a local level and a city level that addresses crime in the city. I hope that we don't listen to situations that happened personally to me, that if someone is proven innocent to their proven guilty, but there seemed to be a tension in the community in the room that if I'm involved, I don't want to support, that Michael Williams is doing. But if you didn't get the memo, it's matter of public record, that my involvement in any program was exonerated from a three-panel judge, that there was no victim in my case. So if you're wrongly convicted, don't you need to be made whole? In America, you should. You went through the process, we believe in the due process, I believe in the due justice system, but the justice isn't always right. I just hope that we don't allow people to have a second chance and be framed, and let that baggage follow them the rest of their life. That's all I'm saying. So hopefully, I want to continue to work this city. We have our problem, but we're still on a great city with great potential. Let's operate in a potential and a defining moment, and make Shreveport one of the best cities in America. Thank you for all the work that you do, and I know it doesn't notice, but we appreciate what you do. We always agree, but we appreciate it. I know what it's like to serve in public office, it's a tedious position, but we thank you and-
Your time has expired, Mr. Williams.
Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Edward Savannah. Mr. Savannah?
My last council meeting, Councilman Bradford, you stated that you was gonna set up a meeting with the administration and the chairman, Bowman. You asked me that could we move, or wait, move our conversation upstairs to the second floor, and also Ms. Fields Jones asked me, could we go upstairs? I waited around until about 7:30. No one talked to me at all. Only person to talk to me was Mr. Bradford, and he bought me the second anonymous letter that was bought out. And also, I learned the other day that the Shreveport Police Detective and a sergeant went out to Screets and Drainage to investigate the letter, to see that I have anything to do with a letter that was written on my behalf. So now, I have no other choice, I'm not coming back down here anymore, because somebody's playing some games. You got a leak in your bucket, in your office somewhere. It's a leak in your bucket in Screets and Drainage somewhere. The letter came from Screets and Drainage, from someone, two people in Screets and Drainage. Since the council didn't do their investigation, I, and me and my family, as a Savannah family, we conducted our own investigation, along with some city employers. We conducted our own investigation. But as I stated publicly the last time I was here, I was never suspended from any job, and, Mr. Mayor, you knew that I had nothing to do with those sanitation workers walking off their job. They was already on a forced shutdown. We met with those guys, you had ample time to clean that up for me, and here I am, my reputation, my character is being questioned, and I campaigned for you wholeheartedly, because I gave you my all. You contacted me, and I told you I would give you my all, and I gave you my all. I gave up my political career to support you, and in return, I have not yet to hear from you or anything. I waited down here patiently until 7:30, and Ms. Jones, she looked me right in my face and then opened her mouth to me. Mr. Bradford, the only one came out and talked to me about this. Now, I'm asking the council, which I know y'all don't care, because you're gonna tell me my three minutes appearing anyway, Mr. Nichols, that's why you're sitting there watching your watch anyway. So, you know, now, I'm not going to come back down here anymore to ask anything else. Now that I'm gonna put this back on the mayor's hand, and he don't take illegal action on this, I have no other choice. Don't shoot, because I just failed on you. Don't shoot. I have no other choice but to release whatever's in my phone to the press, because I'm not gonna get anything else done from this-
Mr. Savannah, your time has expired.
I know you was gonna say that, that's the reason why I said, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you, sir.
And by the way, if you want to investigate anything, this is what I found on all the city of Shreveport trucks. Mr. Ben Raymond, you need to have these, because all y'all inspection signals are expired. There the pictures go. I have copies of them.
I'm sure the administration will see that all our trucks are inspected if they're not up to date. Thank you. There are no further requests to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Just a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Have a-
Did you fill out a form, sir?
Yes.
It was late? How many, how many, how many you got late? You got two late ones?
I ordered two. I think it's seven.
Seven?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think again that the rules of the council is clear, so if the council want to vote to extend some privileges to these people, we need a motion and vote on it, but I'm not prepared to.
Mr. Chairman, I continue to think that we should apply the rules as they are written. These comment requests were submitted substantially after the cutoff time, and we need to move forward to do the city's business, in my view.
I'll make the motion to extend time to hear the rest of these public comments. I got all night. I might complain about being hungry, but y'all are used to that now.
I'll run and get you some heat.
I need a second, though.
A second.
We have the following executive appointments to be considered. Assistant City Attorney Courtney Harris, who we saw on yesterday, Assistant City Attorney Alonzo P. Jackson, spoke to me yesterday, Mr. Windsor Andrews, for a reappointment who we spoke to on yesterday, and also Shreveport Airport Authority, Mr. Grant Knuckles, who is here, if anyone wants to see Mr. Grant Knuckles.
Mr. Chairman, he's a reappointment, and considering his service already, I would like to move that we confirm these four individuals.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Green to move forward on these executive appointments. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Congratulations, Mr. Knuckles. There are no items on the consent agenda for introduction. Mr. Thompson, please proceed with regular agenda items.
Resolution 67 authorizes a mayor to enter into a donation agreement with the Cattle Parish Fire District Number Three for ten used Scott Safety Air Packs.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion, please vote.
Would you? You have a second?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution 68 amends a fee schedule for the Emergency Medical Services Division of the Shreveport Fire Department.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Flur. Is there no discussion on number 68? Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution 69 declares certain supplies, materials, and equipment, specifically vehicles, to be surplus and to authorize a purchasing agent or his designee to sell and dispose of said surplus property by public auction.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Bradford, second by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution Number Seventy establishes a citizens' bond study committee to study the needs and priorities of the city for capital improvements projects.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Flur, second by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
I think Resolution Seventy-One is to be postponed.
That is my resolution, and I will make that motion so the chief dies can be present for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilwoman Fuller. Postpone. Please vote.
I don't think it was cleared.
What'd you say? You don't think it was? Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution Seventy-Two, I believe, is to be removed.
That is correct. I would throw that in.
We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Green on Seventy-Two. Is this a postpone or remove?
To remove it.
Withdrawn, okay. Motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, we now in the introduction of- Uh, Mr. Chairman, we're now in the introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to June the twenty-fifth. Resolution seventy-three authorizes the submission of the 2019 through 2023 Consolidated Strategy Plan and the 2019 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Number seventy-four authorizes a mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the city and Shreveport Development Corporation, here and after call owner enacting through Anthony H.A. Janka for the water and sanitary sewer mains and related facilities to serve Magarina Woods Unit Two and Twelve Oaks.
If there are motions to introduce these resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Nicholson, second by Councilman Green.
No, no vote necessary.
We're now in the introduction of ordinances. Ordinance number seventy-two amends the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance seventy-three amends the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. And ordinance seventy-four amends the 2019 Budget Funding Contractual Services provided by Sportran by Metro Management Associates, Inc.
Move second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Fuller. If there's no discussion, please vote.
If there was necessary.
Okay.
Seventy-three.
Uh, we're now in the ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance number fifty-eight, I believe the administration wants that postponed.
Yes, that's correct.
So moved.
Second. Fifty-eight to postpone. Please vote. Been motioned, been motioned by Councilman Bradford, second by-
Second by me.
Councilman Green. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance sixty-five amends the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. This is an airport.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance number sixty-six amends various articles and sections in the City of Shreveport's Unified Development Code. There is one amendment. This amendment requests the MPC to consider removing the requirement that a food truck vendor must provide the MPC with each location where the food truck will operate and to substitute that requirement with a requirement that the vendor agrees to abide by specific rules and regulations with the understanding that the vendor can be fined or lose temporary use permit if the agreement is not honored.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, we had discussion yesterday regarding this, this amendment as well as the ordinance in totality. Was it not our intent to amend it all back?
No. The, the amendment, Mr. Chairman, to answer this question.
Yeah, my question was, we were satisfied with, with the, all the others except for the amendment.
That's correct. I mean, I don't know if that's correct.
I mean, we heard, we heard the presentation, but I, I thought we would just, just do it all in one, but that's not the intent?
I think it was only exhibit deed.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I withdraw in our second motion to adopt the amendment. The amendment.
It's been moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bradford. The amendment. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
All right, the amendment was adopted and the amendment would, would send back to the MPC the section that was in controversial. And I don't think that there is any problem with adopting the rest of it. When we had the meeting, everybody seemed to be in agreement. So a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended-
So moved on the motion as, on the amendment as adopted.
On the ordinance-
On the ordinance as adopted by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance sixty-seven will revise Chapter Two, Article Eight, Division Two, Section Two dash four twenty-one of the Code of Ordinances relative to onsite certification business by Fair Share Program participants.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we would table this.
You want to table it?
I want, I want to table it, that would give us sufficient time to go through these so various committees.
Is that a motion and then we got a second by Councilman Green?
Yes.
Okay.
Allow me time to convene my meeting and then we'll do a follow-up meeting.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance sixty-eight amends Article Four of the Code of Ordinances Concerning Fireworks. This ordinance will increase the sale application fee for fireworks within the city limits. Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Nicholson, second by Councilman Butcher. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Mr. Chair. He said, he said it could go up to $500, John. I mean, Councilman, did you want to take?
Councilwoman Fuller told me I best not do that on the fly, Councilman Green. We'll stick with what we got for today, but thank you very much.
Yes. If there's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance sixty-nine amends Section ninety dash three oh six of the code relative to reserved parking spaces for the handicap.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Green, second by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that passes with seven, Mr. Murphy.
Ordinance seven amends Chapter fifty of the code by repealing Section fifty dash one sixty-seven relative to wearing of pants below the waist in public.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fuller and second by Councilman Green. If there's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Six.
Six, four, and one proposed. Ordinance seventy-one amends and reenacts certain sections of Chapter ninety-four of the code relative to utilities and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Green, second by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Those are all of the items on the regular agenda. I'm not aware of the item on the table agenda to be removed.
There is none. We haven't, I thought we had a proper standard, look, we don't.
We have no appeals, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committee?
Mr. Chairman, we will be having an audit and finance meeting about before that next council meeting.
Okay. And I'll do what I was supposed to do last few days ago and send out a request to find out what's a good date for proper standard.
Proper standard.
Same for infrastructure and GIS.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Ms. Jones for scheduling the city's actuarial firm, which is responsible for providing reports to us concerning our pension system, to make a presentation to the council on July ninth. As we discussed at a previous council meeting, our pension system is in dire financial condition and I appreciate the administration's arranging for middlemen to address us and help us consider steps to correct that very serious situation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, also, Mr. Thompson, I'd ask the city attorney about executive session the next council meeting in regards to updating us on some information.
Yes, yes, sir, Councilman, we have added two dates to the calendar for the next few sessions to do some-
And I will be sending you that list as I agreed to, okay?
Councilman Green?
Mr. Chair, also, Ms. Hart was here. We're, we're going to have the Renaissance-
Festival.
Festival on-
June fifteenth.
On June fifteenth in Cedar Grove. And also, that will start at what time, Ms. Hart?
The festival starts at nine AM until thirty.
Nine AM? Yes, ma'am. And also, Mr. Chair, better known as Jabba Jaws the Street, will be dedicated to him on Saturday as well at four o'clock.
This day?
Yes. All right. And we're having a motivational enrichment program at Union Mission Baptist Church on Saturday from nine until twelve. If there are any youth that's interested, then you can come and share.
What about all that?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller?
During this meeting, John Nicholson, Councilman Nicholson, I've decided that we'll be having lunch with whoever wants to show up on Saturday at Real Barbecue and More. I'll probably get there around 11:30, don't get there before me because I want to get my plate first. But we're going to, we're going to support Mr. Clay on Saturday, so come, come talk to us. No, it's not free. Y'all got to pay for your own plate, that's why I'm getting mine first, I'm not paying for y'all. But let's go, let's go support and that food's good.
All right, I agree. All right. Mr. Thompson, is there a clerk report?
Not today, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And Mayor Perkins, do you have any additional communication?
No additional communications, Jim.
And if there's no other communication, may I have a council member? This means the chair.